It is now six P M. Uh for our June twentieth, I'll call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Uh Commissioner Abrams. Commissioner Dagger. Commissioner Rudolph.
President.
Commissioner Nolan.
President.
President.
Here.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum, thank you. So the next on our agenda is approval of minutes and in this packet included in the the city notes were both our May Joint City Council Planning Commission Study Session as well as our Planning Commission Meeting of May. And so hopefully everyone had a chance to review those, are there any corrections? Okay, good, I had to ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
Dave Hamilton, I moved that both sets of minutes be approved.
All in favor?
But second.
All in favor?
I.
Hi.
Okay. Okay, I don't believe we have a hearing tonight.
No.
Nope, so then we get to briefing and discussion and I would welcome our city manager here for our thing, thank you.
Chair Nolan, thank you, Vice Chair and Commissioners. Those of you online and staff, Tracy Justin's up there. As is Mandy, I just want to make this fairly quick, but I think, I don't know if you recall back, probably two months back, we the first quarter, I brought the fact that we were working on a twenty forty vision, kind of where this, we see the city in about ten to twenty years. We also wanted to set some priorities for the city within the next three to five years as well, so we hired a company called nineteen sixty one Consulting to help us. Rob Fenty was a consultant and he's been working with us since the end of twenty twenty three with staff, with council on putting together our twenty forty vision. So in front of you and I apologize it's black and white because our color printer ran out of certain ink and I I couldn't figure out how to get the ink fixed, so it's black, white, but what I will do since I see, I see we have Commissioners online as well, I'll send electronic copy to Sybil and she'll send out to all of you, so you have the electronic copy, it's in color. So this twenty forty vision, if you, I'm not going to go through in too much detail, but the next page, the first, the second page on that is underneath that title page, it's Mill Creek Strategic Themes and Principles. There are three actually underlying, underpinning themes on how council got to the twenty forty vision, which is on the next page, but just quickly going over these things, it's clean, safe, well maintained outdoors and community. And so when they put this long term strategy together, they looked at kind of the process was that council met with this, our consultant on a regular basis all this period of time and with staff and we've put together kind of what these underpinnings kind of stand for. And all that, if you have any questions on this, we can ask you going forward, but this really kind of summarizes that, and on that following page, you'll see a list of what that vision is for twenty forty. Out about twenty years, financial health and economic vitality underneath there, there's three bullets that kind of kind of underscore kind of what council was thinking in terms of financial health and economic vitality down the road, and that applies to looking at how we develop our economy, not just from a business standpoint, not development, but also maybe from a industry standpoint as well. Safe and clean. This refers to not just public safety, but how we change our infrastructure to address areas across the city to improve safety on streets, sidewalks and so forth, whether it's ADA, maybe bike lanes or pedestrian flags and things of that nature, so again, I'm not going to go into details, but if you go through that and you have questions, you guys reach out back to me. The fourth, third one is engaged and connected community. Council wanted a community that was connected not only through trail walking paths and sidewalk, but thinking outside the box in terms of how we do it. For example, using technology as well possibly, or how we incorporate infrastructure and development potentially down the road to accommodate a community that's more connected from a both a living in a retail standpoint. Well maintained outdoors and public spaces. Again, as you know, we have a lot of trails and and the trend towards communities moving forward is that people want more places to walk and be able to have accessible places to go so for social gatherings and for even shopping and retail and doing their daily needs that are fairly close, so we're trying to emphasize that people want that close proximity. If there's any questions, just let me know, I could answer those questions, but so that's really our strategic vision for twenty forty. This is really a summation of it and so.
Commissioner Biles, I think.
I'm sorry.
I was gonna, I figured you were actually gonna like finish what you were saying.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry. And I will take questions.
I'm good.
Okay.
I just wanted to, I wanted to let them know.
Oh, yeah, sure, thank you, sorry, oh, yeah, I'll make, I'll go through the final slides and they're pretty straightforward. The third slide or the fourth slide, actually the third one is if you see this what council deemed as their three to five year priorities. Number one is creating a vision implementation for a plan for the sub area. So if you're not aware, we've established kind of an option of going forward and how we address design code, of course, with a sub area and actually getting that sub area actually ready for potential development and thanks to you and council that, you know, there was approval for potential rezoning in that area, so it's a vision implementation and so we're now we've upgraded one of our positions from a planning manager to a community development and planning director, so it's on being advertised right now, so we're actually planning from a resource standpoint and hiring the the right person to actually lead this city and moving forward with not just the sub area, but also the D R C C as well, so that's really a kind of a key part of our strategy moving forward is getting the right personnel in place. Number two is approved design and develop more multi person facility, helps around all our church cook property, as you also refer to as park properties in the past, but that's on the these are in order priority, they are not in order of priority. The third one is develop a plan for the financial ability of the city, short, long term. Mayor mentioned in the state of city address how right now staff is actually less than what we were before the pandemic, but we're doing a lot of things to try to move the city forward, so it's not sustainable, so we're starting to look towards adding personnel moving forward and resources that are important to ensure we have the capacity to address all these priorities and projects. So developing that plan moving forward is critical as we start discussing how we're going to fill those needs. The fourth one is reclarify meet city standards for well maintained outdoors, public spaces. Historically, the city of Mill Creek is as is growing slowly, we're starting, we're more mature of a city now. A lot of things were done in the past that need to be revisited, now that we have new staff as well, we're starting to see things that we need to improve on in terms of not just internal practices and procedures and processes, but addressing our code is for example, addressing all of our policies. And so that's a big, pretty big lift, but we're continuing to address these standards and you'll start to see more things come forward to as we work on these, the G R T C and the sub area projects. Increasing community engagement, councils, really, one of their big priorities is to, is to engage more of our communities, the large groups and the partners that we work with, including but not limited to like Snowell Libraries, HOAs, more with the MCCA, Board Day Clubs. A lot of our potential partners so that maybe being able to weigh in on some of our projects like the the North Shore Senior Center as well, to give some examples, but so just increasing community engagement is really important, not just partners, but also with with our actual residents and visitors that come into the city. And I think that's it and Commissioner Biles, if you have any questions or anybody else, I'd more happy to take them.
Yeah, I actually do have a few questions for you. One thing I noticed on, so in this copy, this is, all the pages are labeled number six, so I'm gonna just go by in sequence, it appears to be second page and it's the diagram with the multiple circles.
Yeah.
Okay. On the last one, community, I see great schools, which Mill Creek is, does have many great schools, I want to know how the city will do this. Will, will influence great schools, because that's, as, as I've been told repeatedly, that it's handled by the school board and not the city and the city is not responsible for the schools. Or the choices they make.
Well, I think as, as, as a city, we are partners with the school district, right, EPS. And we work with the schools directly, like we do recently with Mill Creek Elementary. We collaborate with them on public safety issues, we work with them on facility use agreements, we have agreements with them, like a facilities use agreement where we share facilities. They have plan learns that are C D L North. We used to use our basketball, their basketball courts, but we no longer do that for the, for the basketball program, but we do use their facilities for other, other events as well. I think it's a partnership right now that this is a vision, this is not something that we have established on how, but this is what the council looks, is looking forward to either improving or working with the district. And so right now, we're, we're gonna read to, kind of revisit that partnership with our superintendent of Arapoke Schools and talk more about how we're gonna do that, but this is just our vision, and so I think you'll see more down the road in terms of what they look for, in terms of what great school is gonna be, so but I think we have good relationships with them now. But we have not at this point, point looked at how we do that moving forward, that's our vision.
Okay, I guess on that maybe community in, in, in the community engagement, I remember one thing that we'd done during the pandemic was there was like a graduate parade of cars that went through the city. Are we still doing that or no, but either way, that's a great type of thing where it helps with community engagement and it helps.
There, yeah, there, you know, there are a lot of things that we have not done. And due to capacity, I mean, there's certain things we can do, people want a Memorial Day parade. We can't, it's, we could do a Veterans Day or Memorial Day, we chose Veterans Day. We can't do everything, we have limited number of staff and again, we have limited capacity in our marketing communications department. But I think they put together a pretty good portfolio of events. So that's one that was brought up before, we decided not to do it because we had to choose kind of which ones we thought would add the most value to our community, so there, there are a lot of ones that we've been approached with that we, people think that maybe that might be great for a community and we're always willing to take input. You know, in terms of, but we, every year reassess, we have a kind of a a portfolio of them and as you've, as you've seen over the past three years, partying in parks and so forth and and other events, but this is decision we've made just to do certain ones, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I do have a couple of minor things, but I wanted other people to have turns.
Yes, I was just gonna, we hadn't mentioned on the, on the school thing, the policies that the city has in place from a standpoint of new development and having the funding in place, you know, the, the builder either puts in some facilities or contributes so many dollars per house, and that's another way the city certainly supports the quality of schools.
That is correct, as we move forward with the, the D R C T properties, even the sub area. You know, we, we put together a list of stakeholders. And I believe the school district is on that list as well, I'm not sure if they're an interested party or stakeholder, but just like Snowell Library, you know, we have them on the list as well, they're we don't know what even the concept will be of the properties. But as we move forward with development, I, that's something we need to consider is who on this list, it's a pretty robust list we have. And so it's just at some point in time, we need to decide who, which organizations will be on that, but the school district is a key stakeholder in a lot of things we do, given the number of kids that go to school here and so and how close to the high school that that property is going to be as well, the D R C C. So there's, we have to consider that as well, so, yeah, thank you. Chair Bales, you had.
Mine is just more, there's, I'm just on the walkability, if we could add bike ability, because I think the two go hand in hand.
Bike ability is part of it. It's, it's connecting people and, and there's been discussion about bike lanes too. Now, the Safe Streets for All Program that we're implementing now, it's, it's an inventory of kind of what we need to do to increase safety. As you know, bike lanes is a way to slow traffic. Unfortunately, but it doesn't work about eleven, of course. But, 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 so yeah, bikes discussions have been brought up many times, so that will be part of the whole discussion of walkability, bikeability. And have those bike lanes within the city, but it's, I think it's difficult just to put a bike lane on you know, choline or.
Yeah, it's the whole bike plan.
And there's no continuation of the bike lane, it's, it's, it's just a slow traffic, I think it's, it's not gonna work, but that's just my thoughts for now. But we'll take a more in-depth analysis of kind of how those bike lanes would work, but yeah, that'll be part of the discussion.
Okay, I had just a couple of other, I just want to clarify on council three to five year priorities. Number one, create a vision and implementation plan for the sub area, this is the Mill Creek Boulevard Sub Area.
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct, yes.
I just, I didn't think there was a different sub area we're talking about at the moment, but I wanted to be sure that we, we, we pointed out the D R C C for item two, so I thought maybe, oh, maybe there's clarification that could help with that. And I was actually a little bit confused on what you'd said there about it's an enumerated list, is that enumerated in order policy or priorities?
It's not.
Okay, could, okay, could we, could we put that as a bulleted list instead of an enumerated list then? Because it, it, I think.
One wins one.
Yeah, one sure looks like one, looks like first priority, and then everything goes beyond that and that's, it it implies a lot without saying it, and so if it was a bulleted list without that, it helps, I, I think you would even, when you looked at it, you said to me.
Oh, great.
Oh, look, they're putting that as top priority. And I, and I go, well, it sounds like it's not exactly, it's in the top five.
Well, this list was approved by council the way it is, I'm not sure if we could change it, it was approved, confirmed through resolution. So I don't think that's gonna happen, but.
So apparently it might be the first priority.
Maybe they knew it was number one.
Yeah, didn't know it.
All right, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
And just to let you know, the, the numbering, I understand the numbering, just out of a rush and trying to get this printed, I had to renumber it, so thank you.
Like I said, it was on this copy of it and I go, I'm sure, it also got Mill Creek new URL, I'm like, I'm sure that's gonna be updated.
Originally, this had nineteen sixty one's stuff on it too, so we had to change the it's not completely updated, but we'll send you electronic copy that's makes more sense, so.
Okay, no, well, on behalf of the commission, thank you so much for coming and spending your evening, giving us the update and I, I really do appreciate hearing the city, hey, we can't be all things to all people. We have to set priorities, we have to look at staffing, I think that's an important message.
And I, I think this is pretty although it's pretty defined, set in stone, there's, you know, there's some flexibility on how we do some of these things too. Great engagement, bikes, you know, walkability. As you know, as we get more community engagement, for example, D R C C. If there is an advisory committee on that, which will be from our residents and businesses and so forth. There's gonna be a lot of detailed discussions on, on more specifics and how we move forward, so this will be the guide and, and so we want to make sure that we disseminate this to all of our commissions, partners, and so everybody will have a copy of this eventually. Move forward and so on the same page, so.
Okay.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it, and again, we'll give you electronic copy. So you have that in hand to all of our commissioners.
Great.
Appreciate your time, appreciate it.
Okay. So next on our agenda is our twenty twenty four comprehensive plan update, items one, two, three and four, transportation element, environmental goals and policy, parks and rec and survey results, so I will turn it over to you, Sabel.
I'll turn it over to Mandy.
Perfect.
Hello Commissioners, nice to be with you, I'm virtual this evening. For the first part of our presentation, I would like to introduce Drew Hethcathorn, who is with Transpo. And as you might recall, Transpo is a sub consultant to OTAC for the Conference of Plan Update Work. And Drew is a multimodal transportation specialist and project manager with Transpo and he's gonna walk you through an introduction to the transportation element, so I'll turn it over to Drew.
Thank you, Mandy. Bear with me, first time presenting here, so sharing the screen. See.
Is it all on your screen?
I can see it. Yep. We're good. Okay. Good evening Commissioners. I'm Drew Agathon with Transport Group, we're helping out OTAC and the city staff with the comprehensive plan updates. I'm going to introduce the transportation element, which is another chapter in the comprehensive plan. Some cities have standalone long range transportation plans, typically larger ones. And then they would summarize their, their, their standalone plan into the transportation element, in our case with Mill Creek. The element itself will be the long range transportation plan. And so the, the intent of, of the element is to answer these two questions, what is our plan for the future, and by future, we mean twenty forty four, so over the next twenty years, and how can we, how can we make it happen? One important caveat with, with how can we make it happen and something that's unique with the transportation system, of course, is not every facility of Mill Creek's transportation system is directly controlled by the city. So we have two state highways, Botha Ever and one thirty second, that's controlled by the states. We have bus service provided by Sound Transit and Community Transit. There are of course county roads that lead into the city and also along the border, like Seattle Hill Road, east of thirty fifth. So the, the answer to the question, how can we make it happen, will be different depending on if it's a city directly owned, controlled city facility versus owned and controlled by one of those partner agencies. And it's still important to, to address the city's desires for those, for those partner agencies' facilities. And the transportation element can serve as a conversation starter for, you know, engaging with them and, and making the case for, for what the city would like to see, what the city's vision is for those facilities. So even though you don't have control over them directly, it's still, it's still good to put in any projects that you want to see there ultimately and what your vision would be. So there's a number of things that these states and PSRC require in the transportation element. So of course, has to be consistent with the regional plans, PSRC, they issued their vision twenty fifty, the regional transportation plan has to be consistent with the policies set there. As per the state requirements through the Growth Management Act, the element has to inventory existing transportation facilities, essentially document what's on the ground now. It has to include a multimodal level of service standard, which the city does have multimodal level of service standards, and just so everyone's on the same page, multimodal just means all the different ways of getting around, so, so like it has in the image there, walking, biking, freight, transit, vehicles. And so each of those is the travel mode, so when we talk about multimodal, we just mean all of the different ways of getting around. As part of figuring out what the, the future needs are, one thing that we will do in our update is forecast future travel in that twenty forty four scenario. So understand what would be the traffic conditions in the future and we would use PSRC actually has a travel demand model, which, which we would reference to, to come up with a projection for, for what the future travel demand will be, and then that would, that would help determine what the, the list of projects needed to meet the multimodal level of service would be. The state emphasizes walking and biking and, and as I know, that's an emphasis for the city as well. And, and ultimately, the, the elements will identify a list of projects that's going to meet the, the future demands. I know you've, you've talked a lot about the land use settlement, so meeting, meeting the future demands of, of that land use growth and, and what the travel demand increase would be from that. And also has to be a, you know, fiscally constrained plan, obviously, the, the, the details of, of, of the financial plan are set forth, but at least having a finance strategy for that twenty year timeline. To, to build out the, the projects that would be on our long term project list. So this is our workflow, what we will do to update the, the transportation element, so we will document existing conditions. We've, we've done a lot of that already, update the transportation policies, which we're gonna preview with you tonight. Run that travel demand model to, so we can understand the, the future traffic effect of, of land use growth in the city. Define the projects based off the multimodal level of service standards and guidelines. And then, and then prepare the document and incorporate it into the overall comprehensive plan. So this slide really represents what the plan won't do. So the last road, major roadway widening project in the city, I believe, was Botha Ever and that was twenty years ago, I believe. In, in the twenty years since, there hasn't really been a significant increase in roadway capacity and we're not anticipating significant increase in roadway capacity in the next twenty years. What that means is this plan to accommodate growth will emphasize all of those other ways of getting around, so that's people walking, biking, taking transit and making the most efficient use of, of the existing transportation system through things like adaptive signal, signal control. Looking to reduce travel demands where possible through transportation demand management reduction strategies, even things like working from home is, is part of that, so that's, that's what our plan will, will emphasize and, and that will be the general theme of our plan is, is focusing on all the other ways of getting around. And that's very much in line with PSRC, PSRC and the state's policies as well. And the image on the right, one, one other important thing to remember with transportation, of course, is it's, it's largely a zero sum game because you're working within a confined right of way, so when you typically, when a project is designed to improve one mode, it usually has a it can often have a negative effect on other modes, so, so the picture here, this is a roadway widening project, you can see the, the the old roadway and, and how it's being expanded, you can see what, what that roadway widening project is going to do for the crosswalks there, it's gonna, you know, almost double the length of the crosswalks, that's gonna make it that much harder for people to cross the street, make them less visible relative to the overall size of the intersection, same with people biking. You know, they're just gonna be less visible in that larger space. And this is, you know, an issue that the city experiences on, on Botha Everett, right? A two lane Botha Everett twenty years ago is, is a different street to cross than it is now, so important thing to remember is, is is when you're designing your transportation system is often about balance, right, because, because when, when you improve one aspect, it can have effects on all other aspects, so that's important to remember here. Let me pause there, any questions on, on just the introduction of things before I step into goals and policies?
Well, your statement on the top of that slide, perpetual accommodation.
Well, your statement on the top of that slide, perpetual accommodation, is that basically what we've been doing for the last umpteen years?
I don't think Mill Creek in in general, the. I think that's, no, not necessarily, in in fact. In the last twenty years, since there hasn't been a lot of roadway widening projects, I think the city is has definitely focused on on the other modes. So this is less about pivoting from, you know, say, the twenty fifteen plan, and now more so just just reiterating. Why why we are focusing on on those other modes, really continuing to focus on those other modes. As opposed to to changing from from the last cycle of comprehensive plan.
Thanks.
Alright, so so similar to what you've seen, I think, with the other elements. What we've done is to organize the policies, we've we've nested them within a set of goals. So each each goal will have related policies underneath, and and we have five goals that we're proposing as as part of this element update. So goal number one, coordinate with Puget Sound Regional Council, Snohomish County. And surrounding jurisdictions to ensure consistency among agencies in implementing the regional transportation plan and regional growth strategy. So. As as I said before, you know, this this plan has to be in line with with PSRC's vision, surrounding jurisdictions, coordinating with them. So so our policies there coordinate coordinate, you know, the city's efforts through the PSRC. And and as well as those neighboring jurisdictions, invest in ITS and TDM, so ITS is Intelligent Transportation Systems. That would be technology solutions to make the existing system more efficient, things like adaptive traffic signals that can. Respond to demand in real time would be an example of that, again, getting the most out of your existing facilities. And TDM is Transportation Demand Management, so usually more programmatic things, ways of. It could be employer incentives, ways of reducing driving demands. As I mentioned before, investing in in all of the modes, that will be an emphasis in our policies, encouraging mixed-use development, so. The idea there is to shorten trips, whether there you can shorten even driving trips, it doesn't have to necessarily be walking, biking trips. But, you know, having mixed-use development will overall shorten trips and then and and overall reduce traffic demand. And respond to emerging technologies, some of this is near term, some of this is a little bit more distant, but. But just anticipating, making sure that those are on everyone's radar.
Yep. What is micro-mobility?
It's somewhat of a catch-all, but the most common. Thing it refers to is scooters or or different types of of often electric, it doesn't have to be electric, but but shared, you know, you know. Shared services, that sort of thing. Kind of everything that rolls other than, you know, a typical traditional bike. And and often, it's it's seem more of a service provided as what we're referring to there.
Good, thank you.
Like the the lime, like the lime and the bird scooters, for example.
Yep.
Um. I was wondering if we could add a specific policy, something related around the light rail expansion, since. Our two main arterial roads out of Mill Creek will be and are proposed endpoints for future rail stations as it adds to. Towards Everett, us as a city designing our city policies and transportation plans. To be amenable to those future stations. So more explicitly in regional plans to call out the light rail, which will, I think, have a significant impact on. Our transportation policies with our city, if it if it comes out, it the way the way it's planned.
Talking about one sixty-fourth and one twenty-eight?
Mm-hmm.
Along the I five corridor?
Yep.
Okay. I'm trying to think of boundaries and.
So that everyone can hear the the side conversation. I'm trying to think of the boundaries that we're talking about here, believe the one sixty-fourth connection might be within the Mill Creek Mooga. But not within Mill Creek today.
It's not necessarily that we have the, it's within our Mooga, it's more that. This our city can benefit from its presence as far as, you know, the ability to go to downtown Seattle. In a short time without the hazard, the the traffic headache, you know, going to Sea-Tac on public transportation. You know, it's a short little drive, hop, or bike ride to get to where those planned stations are from our city. And depending on where, you know, return to offices policies go in the future or not, or just in general. Accessibility to the greater Puget Sound amenities makes us as a more attractive city as a further out there suburb. From further from the downtown cores of Bellevue and Seattle.
So maybe something about the um. Main improving or working with connectivity to the leak light rail. However, close it comes that we maintain.
I believe you're gonna get to that on your next slide, which is multimodal transportation.
Yeah, it's just so that's a big regional plan that's going on right now, and we don't have that called out in that policy.
Yeah, to clarify, we we have higher-level policies on connecting to transit, connecting to regional centers, but we can be more explicit. Given that there's this, you know, once-in-a-generation investment in in light rail, and and that's and that's imminent, or or at least, you know, parts of it. So, you know, we can definitely clarify that in our our policy, specifically mention the light rail connection and and why that's, you know, such a significant value.
And I believe you can correct me, but the city's connection to that is the infrastructure we're putting in or supporting. For the rapid ride buses, you know, and so that's. You you go from our lower density, riding the the BRT. And then you go to the light rail, and that's how we're trying to be seamless in doing that.
Yeah, and and focus on what the city does have control over, which is the the pathways that, you know, the connections to the bus stops. Making sure the the streets are safe to cross, you know, as opposed to, you know, obviously. No direct control over the services, more about, you know, how do we make these services that we know are coming in as as great as possible?
And as we go back to the last presentation, and they talk about the upgrade of our. Sub area, one of the original pieces in that sub area was running buses down Mill Creek Boulevard, and and one of the first motion, or first actions the council. Council took was to say, wait, we wanna keep this as a local road, keep the regional traffic on the regional roads, one hundred and sixty-fourth and Bothell Everett. So that we could maintain and build up our own density there, but have a walkable community while keeping, you know, BRT, which they had proposed to zip through the city. Moving it back onto the arterials, and I think, you know, so these things do play together, but yeah, that was a very smart move on the city's part, rather than having these. Massive roadways to accommodate BRT and move traffic around the the shopping area.
Yes, and that's the common debate in 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 BRT planning is is which street to run it down, and and I and, you know, often. BRT can be in conflict with on-street parking, so on Mill Creek Boulevard, if if, you know, if the vision is on-street parking, that can conflict with with BRT service, so. Yeah, that makes sense. So goal number two, multimodal transportation, orient the Mill Creek transportation network toward people walking, rolling, and biking, and ensure that it is accessible and safe for all. So so obviously focusing on building out pedestrian and bicycle facilities. And I should mention that the city's multimodal level of service standards call out gaps in the in the current network. So that's that's one of the things our plan will focus on is is trying to address some of those gaps in the system. Connecting neighborhoods to transit, so that means. So some of the things in the in the next bullet, there are crosswalks, cut-through trails, neighborhood cut-through trails, which I which I know the. City has has emphasized recently, trying to build those into the into the code where possible. Pedestrian-oriented alleyways, that might be something to explore with with the sub area, so so. Connections through developments and and between developments that that are for people walking and biking and not and not new driving connections. So any any projects and and program that the city implements, we want it to be accessible to all, and that would include. The complying with federal ADA standards and and the ADA transition plan, which does get updated periodically. Goal number three, focus on transportation investments that minimize negative impacts to the natural environment and promote a healthy community. So explore strategies to reduce emissions, improve air quality on on the transportation end, that can mean both vehicle technology, you know. Developing strategies to encourage electric vehicle adoption, or facilitate EV charging, things like that. Or it could or it could be, as I mentioned before, transportation demand management strategies, ways to reduce the demand for for car travel. And and promote all the other ways of getting around.
Um, I have a question.
Yeah.
On these, unlike the first related policy. With improved air quality can say and improve climate change. We don't really have much of an air quality problem in our state compared to other states. But I think the emphasis will more shift to climate change as the goal, that's why we need to reduce emissions.
Yeah, we can clarify that in the policy.
And then, um. I was wondering if something about when you're talking about. The transportations to benefit the natural environment, if we're looking at like the heat island effects as far as how we design. Tree coverage or surfaces of the roads for heat island effects.
Tree coverage would probably be covered in the streetscape element, I would think, and maybe also parks.
Cause it was, we talked about contamination of stormwater, and then I was just. Heat island effects.
I know there's some overlap a little bit with with, we could add a a policy element in the transportation element as well. When there's right-of-way improvements, look in look into, you know, enhancing the tree canopy on a street or something like.
Yeah, cause some of this will be parking policies also, which, you know, you know, covered parking areas, or if you're gonna do. Things to have the parking lot not be such a heat island.
Mm-hmm. And I might, I might just. Sorry to chime in here for the far, thanks Drew, thank you, Commissioner. Some of these areas will be covered in code as well. So just kind of keeping that in mind, and we are not going to carry forward a streetscape's. Separate streetscape's element in the plan. Because a lot of that is more appropriate to be covered in code. And those statements that are more goals and policies will be in other. Elements such as transportation, land use, parks, so just to kind of clarify that.
And I would also add, some of this will be covered in our design guidelines. To help mitigate lack of shade with trees.
And I know the environmental did include some things about canopy prevent. Protection and expansion even, so I think that's some some of what we're talking about there, and. That canopy is part of how we maintain good air quality in our state, so. It is, it may be worth keeping, just to say, we're gonna not, we're we're gonna try to avoid knocking down big old trees or something like that, is really essentially what we're saying. Yeah, and I would mention, when when you. We'll be sending you the detailed list of our policies to review, and within that, there will be a section of existing policies that we're suggesting removal. From from the plan, and the reason that we've done that for for most of the policies listed is not because they're they're. Policies that aren't relevant anymore, or or something like that, it's it's often because they're addressed somewhere else, and most commonly, the the develop, the city's development standards, so. So the the idea in in our our long-range plan is to have policies that are are specific enough that they're meaningful, but not to the detail of of. Where you would get into specific, you know, design elements that that would be in in your development regulations.
Sabell sent them to us.
I just, to clarify, you'd mentioned that you may not have something because it's in a design review standard. In the prior, in the hierarchy of things, are policies above, below, or on par with design review standards? Should be above, so it may be that, okay, we address it in a design review standard, but that's because of a policy, so. Correct, yes, they should flow down seamlessly and incorporate, you know, incorporate what you would like to see in. And okay, it's it's covered under this other policy, and that's why, or this other section of the policies, okay, I wanted to make sure. Yeah, yeah, so it's not like it's an an idea or theme that's completely omitted from the plan, it's it's more the the theme generally is 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 included, and then this this. This policy removed is because it's it's detailed and would be addressed somewhere in in the development regulations.
On the streetscape piece, it's a key because that's how the city is used, keeping existing. Growth buffers and making developers setback and all that kind of thing, but it is. Covered in multiple places, and Mandy's doing a good job of trying to cover it one place well. But yeah, it is, it is part of the look of Mill Creek, so the tree canopy, and it has these other benefits.
Yeah. Yeah, and it could even have standalone transportation benefits. There's there's a track of traffic calming effect from big trees, people tend to drive slower when there's there's a large object that they might be able to crash into, so. It has just transportation benefits as well. So second policy, they're managing to prevent contamination from street runoff and stormwater, that's also a a PSRC policy. And promote active transportation, when when we're referring to active transportation. It's it's a catch-all phrase again, but but mostly we're talking about any any form of travel that has physical activity associated with it, most commonly. Walking and biking, that's what we're referring to there. Goal number four, pursuant to the Growth Management Act, maintain an inventory of Mill Creek's transportation facilities. And establish appropriate level of service standards and guidelines, so this is a lot of the what of the plan, you know, this is what we will do in in our in our update, so. We will map inventories of each travel mode and and stay for the the multimodal level of service standards and guidelines that the city already has. Part of that mapping exercise, we'll also develop some network gap maps, so so where you can see visually where where those gaps are in association with. The the city overview. As a policy, implement a transportation concurrency management program, that's most most commonly a transportation impact fee. So that's a way of of assessing fees on development and then building projects that 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 development would would directly impact. And and having those fees be assessed at the same time that development occurs, so if you have a transportation impact fee, that's a twenty-year. That includes a twenty-year list, you would you would build that over time as development rolls in, so if it's if it's stacked. You know, heavy on on the the first five years, then you should get a lot of that fee upfront, or or if it's if some of it's on on the on the latter half, you know, it would it would. The fees would come in as as the need for projects would would take place with new growth, that's the idea there. Utilize the the travel demand model, which we will do to forecast future traffic. And then we have a policy to maintain and preserve existing facilities, basically getting the most value out of what's already there on the ground.
Yep.
For the last policy here, instead of preserve, improve. The existing facilities, so if it's not working, we don't necessarily wanna preserve it.
Yep, good point.
And then a bigger point is, we talk about it as the main goal itself, establish appropriate levels of service standards and guidelines. And throughout this, and even reflected in our twenty forty vision, we heard about from the city manager, is emphasis on walkability, bikeability. And at some point, there's an inherent trade-off between. Traffic congestion and bikeability and walkability. You know, are we going forward establishing a policy to emphasize walkability, bike rate at the cost of congestion? Stuff in here, or is that yet not defined, or what is, you know, cause we talk about that, but inherently at some point, you're limited. What you do to improve, you know, build the bigger road for the cars, it makes it less walkable and stuff, as a policy, what? What level of standard are we doing, cause there have been places in the United States that came out as cities in certain areas that say we are making it. Intentionally less traffic, car-friendly to at the to benefit our walkability and bikeability. As I was wondering how far as a city, we plan to go towards that path? Or not? Cause we, that's, this is the the hallmark, we keep saying walkability, bikeability, but at some point, there's also people with the traffic. There's also people with the traffic congestion that we have on BE Highway and the the one thirty second, one hundred sixty fourth. You know, and if you go on the other side of our city, thirty fifth is really congested. Um, and at some point, to meet those policies, where does your trade off go?
Right, uh, this, in fact, a few years ago, this was an issue with a crosswalk that made, that was proposed to cross. Uh, one thirty second, uh, just. West of thirty fifth.
Those people jaywalk and I've almost hit several of them.
And so, and and in fact, a a a girl, a child was, uh. Run over by two separate vehicles in a, in a process there. So that was one of the things that brought that up. But in the end, the city council decided against implementing the crosswalk there, making a legal crosswalk there. And said, just don't do it. Um, obviously now you see what the consequences of trying to cross this street. Um, so yeah, they said they didn't want to cause congestion uh, to benefit pedestrians. So I I do want to understand, I think that's a great thing to understand. Are we gonna set a policy that we're gonna have? That is essentially gonna go nowhere, gonna not be enforced, not gonna, in fact, we're gonna use the opposite, that congestion will be king.
And of course, the challenge there is this is state highway, right? So so they they ultimately have the, the, I mean, that is, that's the rub, right? Is is the. Um, the city has a vision. Um, sometimes the, the state has a a different plan for for a facility.
Just to clarify, this, the state was on board with the.
Oh, I see.
And uh, the city, and the city was, um. Is officially responsible from curb to curb. So while the boundary of the city is actually on that road, it is to the opposing curb. So. That entire road, it, we had the authority to put in a crosswalk and the state was allowed that. But um, the city chose not to because they didn't want to slow down traffic.
And.
Yeah, I, sorry, Drew. I was just gonna mention, um, you know, first of all, when it comes to the state and Washita. Things are really changing at at Washita. There's a lot more emphasis on the importance of multi- multimodal connectivity. Uh, in communities, especially along transit routes. So. I think the old adage that, oh, the state's not gonna be conducive or uh, supportive. That's, that doesn't really fly anymore. Um, but I would say that um, it's important to note that these multimodal level of service standards and guidelines. These are um, now required by the state, whereas in the past. They haven't been part of the State Legislation Growth Management Act. So I don't know if you want to elaborate on that a little bit, Drew, but there's a little bit more. Teeth behind the importance of multimodal transportation these days.
Like, can we, like, is it that we can say a intersection that's already at F can remain F? With no improvements, but we can do improvements that will make it more bikeable, walkable? I don't know if that's what the state has put out of these things, cause I just see that establishing standards, but I haven't seen the standards. And at some point. You know, there is this ultimate conflict, but you know, there's the cars versus the the walkability. But we, we as a city keep talking about, we value walkability, bikeability. I mean, I peeked ahead to the survey, that's, that's. High on the list, but yet, you know, if, is that where we're willing to go on those policies?
And that definitely can be set forth in in the level of service policies. And and I think Mill Creek has done a lot of that late work already. Um, there's a lot of good language in the existing plan about. You know, understanding the reality of, hey, you know, certain roadways aren't, aren't, th- there's no feasible way to widen them. So therefore. You know, accommodate new growth, we're gonna have to find other ways of getting around. Um, so I think our our plan will. We'll emphasize that as well. It's, it's just, you know, the, the realities that a lot of roads aren't going to. Uh, get widened. So, you know, let let's seek other, uh, uh, other projects, other ways of of improving uh, people's access.
And Commissioner Schulte, I totally, I hear you and I hear what you're saying is. The prioritize, prioritization of walkability and and cars. And really, even though this is an advisory committee, we can make a recommendation to city council that would. In fact, impact our uh, policy and what we also support as staff to city council and say. How do we then think, think differently and have a different perspective when we are putting this type of policies front? So maybe some of our policy that we can consider is really the emphasis. On uh, pedestrian and, you know, a ratio that is more scalable to human, to the human scale. And making sure that, you know, we don't, when we are proposing a road. We take element into um, into consideration that will help somebody feel comfortable. Uh, you know, like. A ten year old kid crossing the road and less, thinking less of a car, but more of a complete street. Um, thinking. So, yeah, I I do agree with what what you're saying. And actually, July ninth, it would be our next joint, um. Meeting with city council and some of these directions, we also as staff need from city council for them to tell us. What, wh- where do you want us to to go? I. I appreciate the visioning from city manager, but there's more in depth or nuances that city council needs to do. So, yeah.
Yeah, it's more is like, is our policy more balanced between the cars, walkability and bikeability that? We always focus on, can we do things to do that? Or is it, we really want to say at the cost of congestion? You know, that's where, you know, there's some subtleties in the policy of.
There, though, if you look at over the last twenty years on Seattle Hill Road slash Mill Creek. The connector between Buffalo River Highway and thirty fifth. The city has had a lot of pressure over the years from Snohomish County as they develop to the east. To widen that roadway and the, the city made a specific choice to go with bike lanes. One lane each direction, the center turn lane, and a lot of that median is being planted again to the point of. You know, the the complete streets and the, so on the roads that the city's controlled, they've done that. I mean, and you heard the city manager talking about. Bike lanes, which we've talked about for about fifteen years now, but if you look at again, the, the, the Mill Creek Boulevard. That they push back and forth on that, and I think that probably will happen over the next five years as, as we drive policy here. The harder ones are. What do we do in this region as it grows? Because Snohomish County got a ton of growth to the east of us. And honestly, spending fifteen years of my life as a traffic engineer, we could put in the crosswalk. But can you make it safe? Are you giving somebody a false sense of security? Because the thing that kills people isn't. The speed of the car, it's the differential in speed, you know, which you're seeing the results of in Seattle where. They dropped all the speed limits to twenty five, that's great, but a five lane road at twenty five. One car's doing twenty five, the next one's doing forty five, and the pedestrian doesn't have a chance of gauging what that car's coming out of at. So.
Yeah, and that's the thing is, is we're the city in the middle of the, to get to the, the, the bigger.
You'll see that and, you know, we're restoring our police department, but. We were known for people, our roads are the same as what you've got over and the, to, and ours are all signed and. Actually, the traffic today show people are doing twenty five to thirty two on our roads, whereas just to the east of us, the same. Classification road is is posted at thirty five, you know, and so. There's some things we can do, but I I would suggest that the city's done a pretty good job over time. And how do we carry that tradition on? And how do we deal with the multimodal piece of this?
Well, it's not so much, it's not so much a judgment of the past, it's a. Forward and how do we say it? And I, I do wonder if there is value to saying. Promote walkability and bikeability even at potential expense of. Uh, vehicle, vehicular congestion. I don't know if, whereas if you just say promote walkability and bikeability. That might mean more pedestrian alleyways, which I like a good pedestrian alleyway. I also like a protected bike lane that isn't just paint. Pa- painting ins- infrastructure, as much as it's covered by that part of the budget. But it doesn't make me feel safer going next to the forty five mile an hour car, right? But um, that's, that's a, that's a very interesting question when we talk about our wording. Do we actually say? Like, I want you guys to understand, we, when you say bikeability and walkability, you mean. Maybe the average speed will go down one mile.
Well, and I think the city's done.
A lot slower.
They've, they've done that, uh, and they've called it at the expense of regional connectivity.
Yeah, I think that the, though the, the regional connectivity issue is gonna get more pressure on the city to. Not maintain its policies of keeping the narrower roads on a couple of key, well, like Seattle, Mill Creek Boulevard, just. Cause it's, you know, just, and we're, you know, the key congestion intersections are mostly, you know, the hot state highways, which we don't have. As much control over, but we have these small linkages that we do have control over, but the growing pressure from. Outside of our community.
And Village Green Drive. Those are big meandery paths. People don't take those to go fast. They, they take the other ones to go fast, even Seattle Hill Road. I know we're way sidetracking and I, and I. I was gonna say, Seattle Hill Road is really interesting because it is not a straight line. It does meander, it has a posted speed limit of twenty five, and there is that sign that tells you what your speed limit, but it's been there for years. What speed you're actually going. Um, so there are several things the city has done to try and make that, especially because there's houses right up the butt of. So that's, it's a real factor. And that was, I even talked to some people over there that said they really appreciated when the city dropped that because their backyard backs up to that and they're just. It was a significant impact on noise for them, that the speed limit dropping to twenty five, a little bit less noise. A little bit less speed, but kind of a lot less noise. The trees were able to absorb more, et cetera. Um, so anyway, I'm. Hope we all agree, we probably need to move on. Our chair is like, okay, that's enough.
But it's really important.
You have one more goal here.
It's got my man in balance.
Yeah.
And you can't say utopia here and you're not gonna.
Yeah. And you're dystopia the other way.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and all points back to what I was saying about, uh, about balance, right? Uh, I mean, there's, there's always trade offs. Every, every improvement you make to the transportation system, there's always trade offs. That's something we'll, we'll, um, definitely make a point of of emphasizing uh, in this plan. And and I think, um, a- as I said, there, there is some good language in the existing plan a- around this, this discussion of, of. Of, you know, making it clear that, yes, uh, you know. Uh, there, there aren't a lot of opportunities, um, or or even desire necessarily to widen roads uh, in the city. Um, so therefore, we're, we're focusing on these other things. I think inherent in that is, is yes, that, that, that means trade off. Um, we can decide, um, as we work with this plan, you know, uh, how explicit and and what words. We would want to use there that that would make the most sense. So yeah, definitely something we'll get into. So goal five, uh, identify funding strategies to address the future needs of the transportation system and coordinate these strategies with. Neighbor jurisdictions and regional agencies. Um, so again, uh, you know, part of the state's requirements, um, have, have a fiscally constrained. Twenty year plan, um, at least identify funding strategies to to make it happen. Um, and that overall long term uh, project list will then funnel into. The six year capital improvement program, which, which I know the city is work, the city staff are working on, on, on the biannual update to that. Um, so, so in in many ways, the, the long range transportation plan is a place where you can pick. You know, which of those long range projects you want to bring forth to the six year set. Pursue alternative financing, uh, okay.
You're getting to the point that I just wanted to.
The alternative financing.
I wanted to know what a TBD is in this case.
I will get into that. Yeah, so it's the Transportation Benefit District. Um, is one example of an alternative financing method, and and this is something that the, the. PSRC in the state are encouraging uh, cities to include policies uh, around this of of just exploring options for. For financing. Um, so transportation benefit district, um, you know, something like that, how that might be relevant. That's, that's, you know, a targeted. Tax or fee that's assessed on a particular district within a city, not the entire district. Somewhere that obviously that where there's gonna be a lot of growth and development. And then, um, tying those, uh, those fees assessed. Back directly to that district. So there's a, so the, the people of that district know there's a direct benefit to them. Um, it's, it's not, um. Um, spread generally throughout the city, it's, it's targeted focused uh, investment in a certain area. And another uh, state requirement, so if, if the plan, um. Is not able to be funded, uh, based off the, the needs, uh, defined by the level of service standards and guidelines. Develop a reassessment strategy, either changes to other aspects of the plan, um, or. Or reassessing the level of service standards themselves if things seem to be, um, misaligned in terms of what the funding capability is. And coordinating with neighboring jurisdictions, obviously very important. Um, there's a lot of opportunities to do that. I know with the, the Seattle Hill Road being on the border. That was, that was a project that was shared with, with the county. So just looking to leverage resources with, with neighboring jurisdictions where possible, where there's an improvement that benefits both. And that's our final goal.
The additional transportation question.
There's a lot there, and so I appreciate you taking the time. We also as a commission need to discuss.
We also as a commission need to discuss these things clearly to, to try and have a. Try to understand what we all want and then try to come to a consensus on what we're trying to get going forward in here and the kind of wording you're, you're having.
On that note, I did email the policy, um, that really goes into details and there's more. Goals and policy for you guys to review. Uh, if I can get it back by July seventh, that will give transport about three days to put. Presentation back to you and, uh, on the July, for the July meeting.
All right, thanks, thanks. I appreciate you telling us when we should have it back. I know I have not been the best about getting things back by the date you've asked, but. Yes, I appreciate you doing that so that we can do the best, so that we give the best opportunity for people to be able to incorporate those things.
Cool. Well, thank you also much, and I think I'll pass it back to Mandy.
Thanks, Drew. All right, well, good discussion on transportation. And I think we'll move on to the next series, uh, for tonight, which is really. Um, just a summary of the feedback from what we've heard on the environment and. Parks and Recreation Goals and Policies. So first, um, for the environment, uh, let's just go to the next slide. So we did receive some requested edits and we will be integrating those as we move on to develop. The, um, full draft plan. And by the way, now is probably a good time to mention that we are, um, considering. How we will roll out the plan to you and it's, you know, in its final draft version. Um, we just met today and we were talking with Sybil and staff about. You know, packaging things for you in pieces, so you can kind of take an earlier look at. Some of their earlier contents, introduction, community profile, land use, housing. We'll package all that up and have you review that in one module. And then we'll get to the next module and package that up for your review. We don't know the exact dates on when we'll be presenting that to you, but just keep in mind that that's coming. We've appreciated your early look at these goals and policies that we've been developing with you. And then the next stage will be integrating your comments and feedback. And then presenting you with the actual draft plan elements, um, for your review. So stay tuned for that. I, I think there have been, I'm not sure if we'll, if removing references to the MUGA is exactly what we mean here, but. There have been, um, a lot of concerns stated about the cost of annexation and. The challenges that might occur for a city of limited resources such as Mill Creek. And so what we're, what we're trying to get out there is just to be, to walk a fine line between. Seeming to position ourselves for annexation, but also being mindful of the MUGA and. Our city's relationship to that. So we'll be doing that. Will retain reference to cutting preserves. Um, the reference to ORCA can be removed, um. I'm not sure I understand that one, to be honest. It was included because salmon and Millstone Creeks are vital to ORCA recovery. So I'm not sure why we've wanted to remove that. I'd have to check with our team on that. Um, and then there were numerous additions, uh, to this environmental element, goals and policies. So. We'll be looking at ways to incorporate those, but also make sure that we don't have a lot of redundancy. I think there were comments that, boy, there sure are a lot of goals and policies here. What can we do to reduce the, um, overall amount, keeping. The intent the same, but maybe reduce. The intent the same, but maybe reducing some of the redundancy and overlap. So we'll be working on that. Um, so you'll, um, be seeing a second set of goals and policies that.